All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Stratford City Council meeting. I will begin this evening's meeting. First, recognizing that Council BD and Council Brunton will not be joining us. But we'll begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of the community interest. Are there any general or any decorations of community interest to be made? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the corporation, the city of Stratford dated September 12th be adopted as printed.
Move by Council Ingram, second by Council Ritzma, discussion. All in favor? It's carried.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and there's no addendum to be adopted. So moving to item five, report of the committee of the whole and camera session. Item 5.1, just prior to today's regular council meeting, a committee of the whole and camera session was held to consider the following items. Item 4.1 draft lease agreements with the Stratford Festival for the Discovery Center in the municipal parking lot. And that was considered under the position plan procedure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality exemption. Item 4.2 appointment to the corporate leadership team. And that was considered under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees and labor relations or employee negotiations exemptions. And item 5.4.3 code of conduct legal matter, and that was considered under advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And at the in camera session, direction was given on all three items.
Thank you.
Item six is hearings of deputations and presentations, and item 6.1 is a presentation by the manager of diversity, equity and indigenous initiatives. On National Day for Truth and Reconciliation and the events planned for the city of Stratford on September 30th to observe that day.
And at this time, I'll turn it over to Kevin Benel, our manager of diversity, equity and indigenous initiatives. Kevin.
I'm just going to share my slides. You should be able to see. Are we able to see my slides? Yeah. Okay. So my name is Kevin Benel, and I'm the manager of diversity, equity and indigenous initiatives. So today I'll just briefly talk about what we have planned for Tooth and Reconciliation Day on September 30th, which is this coming Friday. Okay, so the schedule on September 30th will start from 1:30 to 2:30 PM. We'll start off with the deputy mayor who will do a welcome introduction and introduce the guests and will conclude with the land acknowledgement. Then we'll have Liz Stevens, which is an indigenous elder to provide remarks about what truth and reconciliation means. And how do we begin to meaningfully and intentionally engage with indigenous people? Second, we'll have another indigenous person that goes by the name of Fran will provide us with a Thanksgiving address in English and in their indigenous language, Ka Yuga. And then next we'll finish, we'll proceed to move on to Roy, who will provide us with some drums and song as well. And then we'll move on to 215, which we have, we'll have a moment of silence. And this is 215 is the time that we selected, which is the national time to provide folks a time to remember the initial 215 unmarked graves that were found. And then since it's been more since then. And then we have the deputy mayor closing us off there. But throughout the day, we have a couple of other things. Today, we sent an internal memo to all staff by the context of what Truth and Reconciliation Day means, what the orange shirt day means. And then on the day of, we'll send a reminder email to all staff as well to just remind them the time between September, on September 30th, between 1:30 and 2:30. This email will also have a message from the mayor. The next, we also have the and the truth and reconciliation flag distribution. So the flags are raised today and they will be half masked on September 30th. And then on September 30th, all staff will also receive a computer notification at 215, asking them to take a step back and to reflect. And it'll provide them some prompts on how we can reflect and what does reconciliation mean within the rules. And then also the Stratford transfer, when it's safe, drivers will pull over at 215, also providing a moment of silence. The same buses will flash between the route name and and a program sign that will say National Truth and Reconciliation Day. And lastly, the memo that went out on the 27th of September provided a high level detail on the town crier. And then 29th will provide some more specific details for the event, like some of the guests that we're having. So that kind of sums up what we have planned for truth and reconciliation. Before I finish, I want to just briefly talk about the land acknowledgement. So as we probably know, land acknowledgement is a political statement used by non indigenous people to reflect and recognize that we're on stolen indigenous land. It's given by non indigenous people an opportunity to reflect and express gratitude and honor the territory that we're on and to reflect on the historical and ongoing impact of colonization. Usually land acknowledgements are done at the beginning of events, conferences or public meetings like this one. And some of the controversies, because oftentimes without proper care, they can be read as superficial and performative. So a scripted acknowledgement excuses people of doing some of the hard work. Like learning about indigenous treaties of the territory and the nations that reside there. So just to kind of conclude some of the things that I'm hoping to do. Once we've finished Truth and Reconciliation Day, my my goal is to connect with some of these indigenous stakeholders. Some of the indigenous elders that are presenting, just to hear a little bit more about their story. Get a preview of what that land acknowledgement could look like, kind of share some inputs of what I'm thinking. And then reach out to other indigenous stakeholders and elders to learn a little bit more about the land and territory, territorial relations and the history. And then lastly, provide meaning or second, lastly, is provide meaningful opportunities to learn about indigenous histories in relations to the land for staff at the city of Stratford. And the goal is to provide meaningful and intentional instructions through the land acknowledgement. So whether it's written in text or when we do in public. How do we take the time to like meeting, we fully reflect on what the land acknowledgement is and why we do it? Yeah, so that's, that's it for me.
Thank you very much, Kevin, and I appreciate your leadership in organizing this on behalf of the city. Any questions for members of council? Counselor Henderson.
I'm sorry, I might have missed this, but is this taking place at City Hall and is it at the front or the back?
Yeah, so that's a good point. That's something I should I should have mentioned. But yeah, so the goal is to do it September 30th on the front of City Hall. So on the steps there. If we have kind of weather issues, we'll be we'll be sending an email to everyone with an alternative location.
All right, Counsel Ingram and Counsel Ritzma.
Thank you, and thank you for outlining all of those events that are going to be occurring on Friday. I just had a question partially related to what you've presented and partially not. We've been talking about having a land acknowledgement to open up these meetings, and I'm wondering if that might be some work that's coming out of the work that you're doing for Friday.
Yeah, so the full so out of Friday, the goal is to kind of connect with some of these indigenous folks to to make a plan to come up with a land acknowledgement. For me, the goal is to make sure that the landing land acknowledgement is relevant to the specific space. So if we do one at the council meeting, how do we also provide a space to reflect? But yes, so the goal is to come up with a standard land acknowledgement, but then also provide ways that that the person that's using it can also meaningfully engage with it. So it's, so it's a little bit more intentional as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel Ritzma.
Thank you, and thank you, Kevin, for that outline. Just I know last year we were able to provide orange shirts. Is that going to be a possibility as well, orange t-shirts? Or what are we doing in that regard?
Yeah, so for this year, we'll have a couple of couple of our CAO's teams or or chief administration office people will have t-shirts and will have a shirt for you as well. But the goal is to build a relationship with the local indigenous art gallery, indigenous. So then hopefully next year we can kind of get more folks to have some of these t-shirts. But for now, it'll be a small group of us that will have one. And then hopefully in the future years, we'll have much more folks to have one.
Thank you so much.
All right, anything further? Oh, Counsel Burbak.
I just wanted to thank Kevin for preparing that. That's great. I'm looking forward to Friday. I just also wanted to mention, I think it's at the museum, they are having an orange shirt event. So you can actually take your own orange shirt and they will have some there as well that you can get for donation and and you're able to customize it at the museum. So that's another option for people if they're looking for orange shirts. And I think there are some indigenous business owners in town who also are providing orange shirts. So if anyone's looking for one, there are, there are some available in Stratford.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, yes, the little bit of a shout out to the downtown Stratford Business Improvement Area Board, who did actually put out a call to all of the businesses within the core, asking if they wanted to order orange shirts, and they did connect with an indigenous company that was providing those. And so there are going to be a number of businesses around downtown Stratford that will have their employees wearing orange shirts on Friday as well.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. If not, thank you very much, Kevin, and appreciate you organizing the event. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, item seven is orders of the day, and item 7.1 is a resolution, and there's a staff recommendation that the corporation of the city of Stratford accept part three on plan 44R-5942 as public highway and dedicate it as forming part of Vivian Line 37.
Move by Counsel Ingram, seconded by Counsel Assalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post any. It's carried.
Item 7.2 was a resolution regarding the supply and deliver of one new vacuum slash flusher combo unit. This matter has been pulled for consideration from this agenda. So we'll move on to item 7.3 proclamation for fire prevention week 2022. And there is a motion that City Council hereby proclaims the week of October 9th to 15th, 2022 as fire prevention week in the city of Stratford. And there is information outlined on the agenda regarding proposed events for that week for members of the public as well.
Move by Counsel seven and seconded by Counsel Clifford. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post any. It's carried.
Item 7.4 is a proclamation, and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaims October 20th, 2022 as light it up for NDEAM Day in the city of Stratford and recognition of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And the many ways people who have a disability contribute to businesses and communities across Canada.
Move by Counsel Ingram, seconded by Counsel Henderson. Discussion. Counsel Henderson.
I see that they asked if there's a way for the city to be able to do either purple bulbs or blue bulbs. Is there any way we can do that? And I would request that we could maybe my fights could send out an update on that or something. And then, you know, ask people in the city if they could light a purple or their blue lights that night. October, I think it's October 20th. First time I've heard of that. Interesting idea.
Mr. Foe, could you take that back and discuss that with me?
Through your worship, certainly.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Post any. It's carried.
Item 7.5 is a resolution, and there is a staff recommendation that the tender T dash 2022 dash 32 for the concrete sidewalk installation contract be awarded to 465929 Ontario Limited, also known as Nicholson Concrete, at a total tender price of $338,050.80, including HST. And that the mayor and city clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
Thank you. Move by Counsel Burbak and Counsel Ritzma. Discussion. Counsel Henderson, Counsel Burbak, Counsel Clifford.
I was a little confused. I thought the sidewalk on Martin Street was going to be on the west side. Because there already is like a path that sort of cuts from Delamere over to the park area. So I thought we were having a sidewalk on the west side. So it connects from Delamere around to Land Street. Is there some clarification on that, please?
No, through the chair, the intent is to install on the east side. Two main reasons being, there's some water infrastructure that we relocate on the west side, making it a bit more expensive to do. As well as just easier for plowing, maintaining on the other side. So that's the reason why the east side was selected. Also provides a bit of a connecting link from the pedestrian traffic from the east end of town.
So are we going to have curb cuts put in so that they can get across to Wayans Street?
The installation will include all AODA complacency.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel Burbak, I believe your hand was next, and then Counsel Clifford.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm really glad to see this item coming forward. I and I wanted to thank the Active Transportation Advisory Committee and the Accessibility Advisory Committee, both of whom flagged these as really important areas. We've been prioritizing them, and it's really nice to see this work coming to fruition. But I just wanted to thank the citizens who helped us choose these areas for sidewalk upgrades and especially around the the hospital. I'm really excited to see those be put in.
Thank you. Counsel Clifford.
Yeah, I was just going to ask the director, we're almost into October. Will will the installations be completed before it gets too cold?
Through your worship, the intent to give this contract early for this meeting. We should be able to meet our deadlines to avoid frost conditions that start to happen in November, so.
Right. Thank you. Anything further? If not, all those in favor the motion? Post any, and it's carried.
Item 7.6 is a resolution. There's a staff recommendation that the city's electronic monitoring policy H135 be adopted.
Move by Counsel Burbak, seconded by Counsel Henderson. Discussion. Counsel seven and Counsel Gaffney.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if for people watching, if there can be just a brief synopsis of the difference between this policy and the existing policy or the or the changes.
Mr. Khan.
Hi, so I can speak to to the policy. This is, this is a new policy. It's required as per the act that we, any employer with over 25 employees have to have this policy in place. What this policy does, it just lists out what data or systems that are monitored. Why are they being monitored? When may the city use that data? And what is the purpose behind it? And any electronic data, so that could be GPS locations, could be emails. So any electronic data that resides or is communicated through the city's network on all city devices.
Thank you. All right, I believe Counsel Gaffney used your hand up.
Thank you, worship. Through you. I'd like to express some concern that it has our chief technology director pointed out that this is a policy directed to employees. I'd offer, and maybe I misunderstand how things work, that members of council are not employees. We don't sign a contract with the city. We are not hired by the city. So I wonder, and I I would wish to make a motion that we dig into the idea of are counselors employees or are they something else? Because I for one am not comfortable with the city knowing where I am every minute of every day if I'm carrying one of their phones in the future. So I'd like to make that motion that we drill down into this idea, are counselors employees? Or are they something else?
So Counsel Gaffney, we can get to the official wording, but because it is city technology owned by the corporation, and it is signed to you in your capacity as a member of the board per se of the corporation. You are covered by this policy. It's already been looked at by the city's solicitor and the staff have reviewed it, and that is the interpretation that every other municipality have.
Great, thank you.
If you'd like it, we can take a referral and get to a written legal opinion on that. If I'm wrong, I'd ask the CIO and the chief technology and security officer to correct me, but I believe that that is the interpretation correct. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, through you, your worship. Yes, I would concur with your your advice there. Counselors are not considered employees, however, for the purposes of this policy that you are covered by it because of the city devices that you are issued as well as the use of the city servers for your communications.
All right. Is there anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any. It's carried. Next item.
Through your worship, item 7.7 is a resolution. There is a staff recommendation that City Council approved the city of Stratford Emergency Response Plan amendments proposed by the Community Emergency Management Coordinator and as recommended by the city of Stratford Emergency Control Group.
All right, move by Counsel Ritzma, seconded by Counsel Ingram. Discussion. Counsel Gaffney.
Sorry, your worship, two in a row. Through you, in reading this this report, one thing that came to mind is that should would there be some value in having either the deputy mayor or another member of council on this working committee to be to be up to speed on what's required if the mayor is not, I know the deputy mayor becomes the the surrogate if the mayor is not available to make the declaration. But I don't know, would there be any value in having another person that's up to speed, another person from council?
So I'll, Ms. Thompson, I'm not sure if you would like to answer it or Deputy Chief.
Perhaps through you, your worship, I can start, and then I would call on Deputy Chief Anderson to to add any additional information. So with respect to this report, we are making some some housekeeping type amendments to it. What we're doing is moving the existing provisions for the support in advisory staff positions to a schedule out of the plan. The intent is that each of the mandatory positions in the plan has a designated alternate or backup position. And so when we do exercises to go through the plan as well as I do a mock exercise. The core group is mandatory. They must attend those annual exercises. But the the backup, the alternates are also being requested to continue to be involved in those exercises so that they are aware of their obligations and responsibilities under the plan. So there is an identified alternate for each of those mandatory positions as well as the support and advisory staff. And again, it's all of those people are actively involved in the the exercises that we carry out. And again, I don't know if Deputy Chief has anything in addition to add to it.
Through your worship, certainly exactly what the CIO has just spoken to, and this was highly recommended, and I suggest pressured almost in a positive way from the Ontario Fire Marshal of Emergency Management, where they're trying to get this standard throughout the province.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything further? Counsel Henderson.
I apologize. I just actually sent this off to staff a half an hour ago, so they haven't had time to even look into it. But I was just curious about what the actual changes were. You know how sometimes when you change a document, you highlight the changes or you might do a straight through if you took something out or moved something in, that sounds like I'm just interested in knowing what the actual changes were. I mean, I heard the CEO John was just saying that it's mostly housekeeping. So, you know, but if that's a possibility, especially when documents like this come out, I'd like know exactly what the changes were, if you don't mind.
Certainly, and through your worship, I'm perhaps wondering if the deputy fire chief could take us through the the amendments.
Absolutely. Through your worship. The majority of the changes, almost two pages worth, were the removal of the actual term alternate as per the OFM's office. The only time, the only one time we kept the word alternate was when it referred to the alternate emergency operations center. Therefore, we don't have to require the all the alternates for the mandatory compliance annual review exercise, which makes it a lot easier, which is why the OFM's office had recommended this. The other main change was the reduction in size, again, as per strong recommendation from the emergency operation, or excuse me, the Ontario Fire Marshals of Emergency Management Office, the reduction in size of the actual emergency control group. And the the, again, I reiterate, the biggest changes of all were almost two pages of removal of alternate as a term in itself.
How did you decide who would be the critical leaders on this, if you had to eliminate some people?
Through the through the chair, the majority of this, we went through what we consider status quo with the other emergency management control groups and throughout the province. So technically, we're doing the emergency services. The mayor, CIO and Communications Officer, however they are named for each location. And that makes it a lot easier with the others available as support staff.
Thank you. Sometimes you can move things along a lot quicker. Less people sometimes, and as long as everybody's aware of it. And thanks for all your work on this and for the explanation. I really appreciate it.
All right, anything further? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, yes, it was moved by Counsel Ritzma and seconded by Counsel Ingram.
Thank you. There's nothing further. All those in favor? Opposed, if any. It's carried. Thank you.
Item 7.8 is a resolution, and there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Establishment of the 2022 to 2026 Joint Compliance Audit Committee be received. That the terms of reference for the Joint Compliance Audit Committee as detailed in attachment one to the report be approved. And that a bylaw be considered to establish and approve the appointment of members to a joint compliance audit committee for the term of council.
Move by Counsel Henderson, seconded by Counsel Assalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post any. It's carried.
Item eight is business, which previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. So moving to item nine, reports of the standing committees. Item 9.1 is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there's one item listed for consideration as follows. Item 9.1.1 Stratford Birth Museum Remembrance Day signed by law variants.
I move by Counsel Ingram, seconded by Counsel Assalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? It's great. Carry.
Item 10 is the notice of intent, and there is none scheduled. It's moving to item 11, which is reading up the bylaws. As noted on your agenda, there are seven bylaws listed, however, only six will be considered as item 11.3 has also been pulled from this agenda. So the bylaws listed for consideration are as follows. Item 11.1, except transfer from Vivian North Limited, Part Three, Reference Plan 44R-5942. Item 11.2, dedication of Part Three, Reference Plan 44R-5942 as public highway, forming part of Vivian Line 37. Skipping item through 11.3, moving to 11.4, appoint members to the Joint Compliance Audit Committee for the term of council. Item 11.5 is the delegation of authority to enter into site alteration agreements. Item 11.6 is adopt provisions to the Emergency Response Plan for the city of Stratford, and item 11.7 is to award the tender for the concrete sidewalk installation contract. These bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
All right. Moved by Counsel Assalacos and Counsel Henderson, that bylaws 11, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6 and 7 be taken collectively. All those in favor? Post any. That's carried unanimously. So we'll go to first and second reading. Move by Counsel Clifford and Counsel Burbak, moving bylaws 11, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6 and 7. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post any. It's carried. And third and final reading is moved by Counsel Gaffney, seconded by Counsel Ingram. Thank you for bylaws 11, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6 and 7. All those in favor? Post any. That's carried. We'll now go to the consent agenda. Any items? Counsel Ingram.
Thank you. I actually have two. So I'll begin with CA-2022-106, and it's the resolution from the Town of Kingsville in opposition to Build Three Strong Mayors Act. I would like us to endorse that piece.
Seconded by Counsel Assalacos. Discussion. Counsel Clifford.
Yeah, I don't support the motion on the floor. It's already been passed to start with, and it only affects Toronto and Ottawa right now. And when you look at it, it only affects Toronto and Ottawa right now, and when you look at the size of Toronto compared with provinces, I believe the mayor should have more power. And the other thing is that if the mayor veto something, two-thirds of council can overturn his veto, so I, I don't see a problem with it. So I don't support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Councillor Anderson?
I'm confused by that, because I thought the issue was that he could overturn council's decision on certain matters.
He can, once two-thirds, uh, go against the, the mayor, then he can't, he can't veto something.
I thought in this new, that's what the whole issue was, in that they're worried that it's going to spread down to everybody, and then, you know, that's, I thought that was the problem with it.
No, the, the problem is, is it, it would take two-thirds of council to overrule. Okay, anything further? Councillor Basilakos.
I was just gonna say that, uh, you know, I, I read something that, um, was said by a former Toronto mayor where he, he says we don't need a strong mayor system, we need strong mayors, and so I, I do think the legislation could filter back to smaller municipalities, and I, two-thirds is a fairly high, um, bar to, to, to pull together, so I, I'd support the motion.
All right, anything further? If not, all in favor the motion? Post any? Want to post, and that's carried. Is there anything else on consent? Councillor Ingram?
Thank you. Yes, so my second item is CA dash twenty twenty-two dash one oh eight. I do have a couple of questions for staff. Um, section three is asking if council has specific concerns regarding zoning, non-compliance with the bylaw, or general objections to the application. Um, there's no information provided as to whether this use of this building complies with zoning, um, whether parking can be accommodated or loading on-site. Um, I assume that parking for the event will be in the municipal lots, kind of across both streets, but I'm, I'm just curious if staff can assist me with this.
Thank you. Who would be best, Mr. Foad, you believe, to?
Through you, your worship, I can start. Um, as noted on the consent agenda, the planning division advised that there were no concerns, and typically with respect to parking at the site, this would be something that they would comment on. However, I would, um, defer to the director of Infrastructure and Development Services to see if there are any additional comments. Um, with respect to the building division, there were specific information that they provided. However, if there are specific questions council has, I would be more than happy to take them back, um, and then speak to staff to obtain more information for council at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Crimclaw.
Yes, just through your worship, um, I think the intent of staff here is directly for the liquor license alone and not any of the building or planning applications that are ongoing.
Thank you. Missing, your councillor Ingram, do you have some concerns you'd like to express?
Um, so I'll just, I just, for information purposes, if, if someone could get back to me and let me know, um, again, usually with a liquor license, you have to be able to serve food, and there's no, um, ability to serve food on this property. And so loading is going to be an issue, bringing in food, and then, and, you know, trucking, catering type utensils in, in equipment away. Um, they're, they're going to need, you know, cutlery, dishes, cups, that, all of that stuff. So, um, how that's going to be accommodated on-site is, uh, is my question.
Okay, that's noted, and staff will get back to it with those answers. Is there anything further? All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Any new business? Councillor Ingram.
Sorry, not trying to hog your time tonight. Um, yes, I would like to, um, just give some notes of positivity. Uh, homelessness has been a, a really big topic lately, and of course, we are in the midst of a municipal election, and homelessness has been a topic of conversation. Um, so I, I would like to give some stats and, and some, um, positive vibes to our social services team, because they do a lot of work. They do some hard work in our community. They're dealing with some of our most vulnerable population, and, um, they do a fantastic job, and I don't think they get enough gratitude sent their way related to this. Um, so currently, the number of households permanently housed in our Supportive Housing of Birth program is forty-four. The number of households housed in permanent housing off of the by-name list, which, um, oh, sorry, from January to July twenty twenty-two is thirty-five. The number of households experiencing homelessness from January twenty twenty-two to July twenty twenty-two decreased from one sixty-seven to one fifty-one. So thank you very much for all of your, all of your work on that. Um, the number of unique households assisted with rent arrears from January to September twenty twenty-two is seventy-one. So there's a number of people within our community that have been assisted, um, and have been housed, and that is a fantastic thing, and I really want to put some positive spin on this. So thank you very much to our so- social services team for that.
Thank you very much, councillor. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to adjourn to reconvene in finance committee. Councillor Basilakos and councillor Burbak, all those in favor? That's carried, and I'll turn the meeting over now to councillor Gaffney as chair of finance.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I'll call this meeting of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee to order. Uh, item two, disclosure, to your interest in the general nature thereof. See none. Uh, item three, delegations, non-scheduled. Item four, director of, report of the director of the, of corporate services. Uh, four point one, draft twenty twenty audit financial statements. Okay, get a mover for that? Moved by councillor Clifford, moved by, or seconded by councillor Ritsumu. Uh, I would ask the director to, uh, she'd like to make a, uh, presentation on this item, please.
Thank you, through the chair. Um, I don't have a whole lot to add that wasn't included in the staff report, but I will, for the benefit of this group, uh, highlight a few things. Um, you know, what, one of the things that kind of comes up was a result of our year-end, and, and it's always on front of mind, is what our cash or operating surplus looks like. So, uh, as a result of, uh, the financial or the final audited statements, um, we can confirm that as staff had previously identified, there was a two million dollar surplus in the twenty twenty year-end. Um, that, as per practice, was transferred to the, uh, tax stabilization reserve, which as some of you are likely aware, most of you are aware, that we use that state tax stabilization to help offset pressures that we experience during budget, uh, offset levy increases, uh, potentially deal with any, um, I'll say surprises that we might experience throughout a given year. So, um, that, those funds are then kind of, I guess, redistributed or reused by the city for, for those purposes. You know, despite a lot of the challenges that we, we underwent in twenty twenty and subsequent years, the financial health of the city is reasonably good. Uh, there's no negative trends or no, uh, uh, areas of concern identified. And, um, looking ahead, I, you know, touch on the twenty twenty-one year-end, and that is that we are moving forward with that as we speak, and we hope to have the twenty twenty-one finalized, uh, within several months. Um, we had to, we did have to wait until the twenty twenty was completed before we could really kind of get into the finalizing steps of that. Um, but that's on, next on the agenda. I was very, uh, privileged to work with the city's, uh, appointed auditors at, uh, at Millards, and I have, uh, the, the, uh, partner for our audit file here, um, as well, that I'd like to ask if he has anything he would like to add.
Thank you, director. And again, through the chair, again, good evening. My name's Cameron Johnson. I'm a partner with Millards. And the draft financial statement, you've got a draft consolidated statement. Our plan is to attach our independent auditor's report to this draft statement. Um, just briefly, as our report is planned to be unqualified, so one paragraph of it would be is that in our opinion, the accompanying financial consolidated statements present fairly in all material respects the consolidated financial position of the corporation as at December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, and the results of its operations, its changes in net financial assets and its cash flows for the year, then ended in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. Um, the director highlighted the operating surplus for the year. Don't let that be confusing with the, uh, confused with the surplus that's on the financial statements. These financial statements are done on a full accrual basis. They recognize tangible capital assets. They also recognize future liabilities, and they're also done on a consolidated basis, including your investment in, uh, Festival Hydro Plus, as well as, um, uh, here on, here, uh, here on Perth Health Unit and other entities. So the total surplus on these financial statements is actually closer to eighteen million, five hundred and eleven thousand dollars on a full consolidated basis. Um, overall, yes, the city is in good financial position. Uh, you've always maintained, uh, list, uh, your reserves and reserve funds and worked to also maintain a cash balance to support those, which is key. There is an adequate cash, uh, for the current year. We have a cash balance of forty million compared to twenty-six the year before. Um, I'd just like to say I've enjoyed working with the director. It's, they've had a very challenging year, uh, with the change pretty well in the entire department. Uh, and also along with the completing of the tangible capital assets for December two thousand and twenty, and we're looking forward to wrapping up twenty twenty and moving into twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you to the director for your presentations. Does anybody have any questions? Or would like some clarifications? See none. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Post any, that's carried. Uh, item five, uh, motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Ingram, seconded by councillor Henderson. Uh, uh, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks, everybody.
To councillor Gaffney, council reconvene. I'll turn it back over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item fifteen point one is declarations of community interests made at standing committees. Are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none.
Item fifteen point two is committee reports. Item fifteen point two point one is from the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and that's item four point one, draft twenty twenty audited financial statements.
Moved by councillor Basilakos and seconded by councillor Clifford. All those in favor? Post any, that's carried.
Item fifteen point three is reading up the bylaws, and there's one final bylaw listed for consideration, and that being the confirmatory bylaw, and it requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Thank you. Councillor Ingram and councillor Basilakos, so move first and second reading of bylaw eleven point eight. All those in favor? Post any, that's carried. And third and final reading of bylaw eleven eight, councillor Gaffney, councillor Ritsumu. All those in favor? Post any, that's carried. And a motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings. Councillor Clifford and councillor Burbak, thank you. All those in favor? Post any, that's carried. Good night.